Sorry. Good evening. I think we've got some feedback. I'll talk lower. Today is Thursday, November 18th, and it's 5:30 PM. This is the Hamden-Wilbraham Regional School District School Committee meeting. As per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the committee and the public will be able to access the meeting via remote meeting technology such as Zoom technology, and the necessary access information will be posted prior to the meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Michelle, would you lead us, please?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, this meeting, we are under somewhat of a time constraint because half of the meeting is our business meeting, and the other half will be joining the training for Catch Your Breath, the anti-vaping training that the Coalition and the Partnership for Youth is having. So, we're going to try and do this in about an hour or so. We do have public comment tonight. There are two people who have signed up. One has asked to not read it, but to have me read her question. This is from Dasha Hoskinson, 8 Blueberry Hill Road. And her general topic she wishes to discuss is, "When is your goal," this is for Mr. Gannon to answer, "when is your goal to bring all cohorts back in person? After the holidays, Christmas break, will families have the option of remaining fully remote through the end of this academic school year? Please be as clear and specific in regards to dates as possible for the purposes of transparency." I'm going to give you this if you want to look back over it. Okay.
So, just... Just got to put yourself so we're not hearing the reverb back. So, a couple of things, we're going to talk to you a little bit tonight, the Dasher and the rest of the community. I have Terry Brand and Misty Foss Trombley. We're going to talk to you a little bit about where we're at right now, what's looking like in the next couple of weeks as well, too, and what's happening with the results we got today with Hamden and both Wilbraham. So, I'm going to, if I don't answer your question by the time we've done our presentation, I'll come back and make sure that I checked off all the things that you asked as well, too, if I can just let that take place first. Okay? So, we got a presentation that we're going to be giving to you this evening as well. Okay? Yep. And if not, I'll come back and make sure that we did it all for us, well.
So, that will answer the questions, the question that you have during his presentation. The other was someone who wasn't sure they were able to do the virtual public comment. Damian Cook-Polly, are you available? Damian wanted to weigh considerations about equity, educational equity, and financial costs of the current educational model. Are you on, Damian?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Shall I begin? So, I first want to preface this by saying that, as you know, I'm the president of the Hamden-Wilbraham Education Association. And while this is not any official statement on behalf of the HWEA, it's definitely informed by many conversations that I've had with people throughout the school community. So, we're in a much better position now to evaluate our learning model than we were in the late summer. The main factors of the decision whether to conduct school in a hybrid fashion or remotely for most students are the same. Health and safety, on the one hand, are balanced with the quality of education and student needs, on the other. In August, there were concerns about the quality of online learning. Many perceptions were colored by the experience last spring and the assumption that this fall would be a continuation of the same. Also, in August, the case rates of COVID-19 were lower, and some relevant experts in epidemiology, public health, and medicine judged that a return to in-person learning could happen with many restrictions in place. Now, the case rates and community spread of COVID-19 in our towns in the region are leading to stricter requirements even regarding family holiday gatherings. At the same time, we also know that our remote learning has been successful. Yes, some modifications were necessary, but our students are engaged and learning. Cohort D students are progressing through the curriculum at the same rate as all other students. Attendance rates are as good or better on Wednesdays when all students are learning remotely. Teachers are adapting to teaching in this new way and, over time, figuring out ways to make education richer. Students also are adapting, and they and their families can much better navigate remote learning than in the spring. In short, the balance between these two factors has shifted. Promising health indicators now look threatening. Remote synchronous education is successful and not an abstract promise. However, there are a couple of other factors that should be weighed and assessed that didn't get as much attention back in August. Specifically, the costs of the hybrid model and the wishes of students and families. This model of learning is expensive and challenging to staff, especially as staff members get sick or have to quarantine. Many teachers and paraprofessionals are on leave, resulting in highly qualified and experienced educators sitting on the bench, so to speak, at home, unable to teach, even though they want to and are able. Citizens of Hamden and Wilbraham should know the financial cost of this model to know if the value is equal to that cost and how. They should know how often their child's teachers might not be there because of absence, quarantine, or leave time. That information was not available in August. Finally, a fourth major factor in deciding how to proceed should include some reliable information about how families and students feel about the current balance between health and safety and their experience with hybrid education. Aren't the public health conditions different enough now to warrant an opportunity to decide on cohorts again? Wouldn't families be making a more informed decision now because they have seen what their teachers provide and how the quality of teaching in a pandemic continues to get better, even as the pandemic itself gets worse again? Do students feel reconnected to school, teachers, and peers so that the social-emotional concerns that motivated us so much over the summer also can be looked at differently? The recent uptick of COVID cases can't simply be attributed to some social gathering. The vast majority of our students are as careful as they can be. They don't want to get sick or bring the virus to grandparents or other loved ones. No, the recent spike is due to spread by a virus that doesn't recognize town lines and building walls. As the HWRSD confronts the new public health conditions, any decisions should also weigh what we now know about remote learning, costs and staffing challenges, and the fresh input of families and students. Yes, there are immediate short-term decisions to be made, but all the major variables have changed, not just COVID numbers, and a reassessment is warranted. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Any comments? No? All righty. Thank you very much for your input. We're going to move on to HWSDF updates, number four. Health and safety updates. Mr. Gannon, Terry Brand, and Misty Foss Trombley.
Sure. Thanks, Cheryl. So, a couple of things. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about what's been taking place in our community. I think that, once we're done, we're going to be answering a little bit about some of the comments that Damian just made, as well as hopefully answering some of the questions that Dasher has answered as well, too, or has asked as well, too. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Dasha was part of the Dasha.
Oh, I apologize, Dasha.
So, just a couple of things. At this point, I'd like to just bring in Kate, if we could, Terry Brand and Misty Foss Trombley. And Misty as well, too. So, we're going to tell you a little bit of information. We know that there's been some guidelines that have come out and some information that came out yesterday from the CDC, as well as some metrics, and a little bit of what's taken place in both our communities. And after Misty and Terry talked to us a little bit about that, then I'll go in and explain to you a little bit what's been taking place in our community over the last couple of weeks since the last time that we met, how things have changed in our community since then as well, too. So, first, I'll ask Terry if you can start and do the introductions of Misty Foss Trombley as well, too.
Okay, certainly. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Misty Foss Trombley formally to the school committee and in the larger school community. She's a resident of Hamden. She has triplet girls in school at Wilbraham Middle School. And she is our district care coordinator. And her position is being supported through the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. And this year, the priority for her work has changed a bit with a focus on supporting in-person hybrid learning, working through our response to cases of COVID in our school community. And she's very expert at monitoring the Maven system, and she's working closely hand-in-hand with both local boards of health to promptly identify cases that have an association with the school district or an impact on our students, and then participating in case investigation and contact tracing. So, we really work very closely together, Misty and I. I really appreciate all the efforts that she's putting in to support our hybrid learning. So, thanks to her, and she is welcome to make any comments tonight as she sees fit about the topic at hand. So, I wanted to give everyone an update. The weekly Town-City Report is published every Thursday now at 5:00. It lists all the municipalities, towns, and cities in the state, and they have a risk designation, color rating, in addition to specific numbers and percentages that are indicators that are being evaluated on a weekly basis. So, Wilbraham's numbers this week were remain in the yellow risk designation. We are trending higher, both in case counts and in test positivity percentage. So, in the last 14 days in the town of Wilbraham, there's been 55 additional cases of COVID. And the test positivity rate is 2.12%, as compared to last week at 1.84%. In terms of the town of Hamden, a little more impact there. They are now designated with a red designation as of today. Their case count in the last 14 days is 28, and their percent positivity is 5.23%. Last week was 3.09%. So, they've had a bit of a sharp uptick in their relative numbers. So, we know that there has been a kind of a slow and steady surge of cases, not only in our communities, but in our surrounding communities, our county, and our state, and our nation. And we know that that will be reflected at school as well and will have some impact. We have been fortunate in that, due to the outstanding efforts of all students, families, and staff in adhering to those safety strategies that we engage in every day, proper mask-wearing, physical distancing, to the extent possible of maintaining that six feet, and good hand hygiene, and parents cooperating by keeping children home at the first sign of illness. That's very important because sometimes people have very mild symptoms, things that we normally would not get too concerned about. But now, especially in students in that age group, they can have mild symptoms and potentially, you know, have COVID. So, people are abiding by keeping students home, for the most part, when they're having any symptoms and getting them tested, having contact with their physician to have some evaluation performed. And then the nurses are tracking all that and making sure people are not returning too soon. And that holds true for our staff, too, and they cooperated very nicely with that. So, I think, you know, as a team, as an administrative team, we're watching what's happening very closely, and we're constantly evaluating. And is each case that we have at school, especially if it involves an exposure at school and the need for contact tracing, we're really working through those methodically to make sure that we notify people, give them their quarantine instructions, work with their local board of health hand-in-hand, make sure that all those proper public health strategies are put in place. So, we're doing that with every case, and each case is unique in its impact, in the, you know, the age group. If it's a sport team, if it's not, if there's more staff exposed or not, more students. Each case has really been unique, so we really try to work through it very methodically. So, I know Kate put up on the screen something from the CDC. So, there was some talk on Mass Live about some CDC changes, and I think it's a little hard to track because they're not always telling you exactly what they took away and exactly what was added or amended. But I think the gist of it is, this is just one section that I pulled out, but I think part of it is like an acknowledgement that, yes, students, children, young people can get the virus. Yes, they can transmit the virus. But indeed, it is true that they tend to fare better, have milder symptoms in shorter courses. But I think it was an acknowledgement that they can indeed spread the virus as adults can. The section I pulled out for you to take a look at is, this was a section on the continuum of risk, and it's looking at the models of learning, of implementation, and mitigation strategies. So, it's showing you like what's the lowest risk. So, the lowest risk would be the virtual learning environment, where we're not coming together as a group. And then it goes across the continuum with the some risk, the medium risk, the higher risk, and the highest risk. And I think that, in the Mass Live article that was published, you know, there was a reference to in-school learning having a higher risk. But I think we have to drill down on what we're doing and what type of learning platform we have. So, when we look at that, we really are kind of falling out in that medium risk because we have the hybrid learning model. We're having smaller, more, not as large class sizes. We're able to institute those safety strategies that we talked about, like physical distancing. We have some mixing of groups, especially at middle and high school, but at elementary, those kids are stationary and staying within their cohorts with minimal mixing. And we're able to have our regularly scheduled cleaning and disinfection. Like, we have a set schedule, and we're doing a great job with that piece of it. So, I think I just wanted to make the point that sometimes we read things and, you know, one piece of information or one sentence is pulled out, and this kind of gives us the bigger picture of where we sit with our experience with our HWRSD learning model. And the other thing I just want to bring up before I send it back over to Al is the flu vaccination requirement. So, all children six months and older that attend school, and of course, for us, that's starting with three-year-olds in the pre-K. So, pre-K to grade 12, it's a requirement to have a flu vaccine by December 31st. So, we still have time, but we're getting towards the end of this period where that is a requirement. And we still have many, many students who may have gotten vaccinated. We don't have the documentation of that vaccination. So, want to appeal to families out there. If indeed you've gotten your child a flu vaccine, please submit the documentation. You can send it to me. I'll make sure it gets where it needs to go, or you can submit it directly to your building-based nurse. We, flu vaccinations are readily available in pharmacies. Pharmacists can give flu vaccines. They do a very nice job. I think people can feel comfortable going to a pharmacy to get a flu shot. Other places are the pediatrician's office, of course, and that varies. You have to call and find out if they're having a scheduled day for flu clinics or if they're having kids come in just for vaccination appointments for flu. So, that's another place to get your flu shot. But we'd like to offer something for our families, so we're going to be sending out another communication to remind people about the flu vaccine. But we're also going to invite them to contact me if they would be interested in an after-hours flu clinic. We'd have like one in the district, determine a location, invite the parent to bring the child in for a flu vaccine. So, I need to find out what the interest is and how many we might expect so we can base our projections on that. And our Wilbraham pharmacist, Sandra Balbino, she's been very kind to the school district over the years, coming to vaccinate our employees, and she's willing to come with another pharmacist and partner with the CVS and have the flu clinic in our district.
And Terry, we're going to just send out a survey to families to just ask who is interested in doing that so we can get a confident number of, can you just, sorry, so that we can get a number of students or families that are interested in having that, so we have those readily available. Is that correct?
That is very correct.
So, Terry, before we go on to that, and I know we're pressed for time, I think it's important just to, when we gave those numbers of 2.12 in five for Wilbraham and over five for him, can you just talk about a little bit like that number and where that number comes from, about a number of tests and how that number is figured out, please?
Right. So, total tests that are performed in that 14-day period. And that period was from November 1st to November 14th. And so, it ends on a Saturday, and then the data is pulled the following Wednesday. Some data cleaning takes place, and then they publish it. So, it's the total number of tests that are performed for that municipality, you know, people who have residents in that town. And then the total number of positives, and that's how that number is arrived at.
And as a regional school district, right, so we're looking at what the instruction that's been given to us is we're looking at our district as a whole, right, and in the large community, and sort of the average of the two.
Yeah. So, I think the Dussie had given guidance that when you're a regional school district, you do more, I mean, you do more of your decision-making based on the larger of your towns. You know, you pay a little more, give a little more merit to those values versus the others. But of course, we're always looking at impacts from both towns, but I think that was the guidance from the commissioner.
That's correct. Thank you. So, I just want to go a little bit more, Cheryl, if I could, I need that same thing. Just a little bit more. And Terry and Misty, I know you're on the call, so feel free to jump in. So, two weeks ago, things have changed in the last couple of weeks since we were together at school committee. And as you're well aware, and I think from the communications, that we're not only giving out to the community, but also individual schools, as well as to families as well, too, of what's been taking place. So, I feel like publicly, we just want to go through those a little bit to make sure people understand. And it just validates a little bit about the work that we're doing as a district, as well as a community, making decisions about whether we're going to go fully remote, you know, as a school, as a classroom, as a district. One of the things I think that you've heard from Terry and you've heard from me is we're not going to do this knee-jerk reaction and just close our, have our whole district go fully remote for a couple of weeks. We're really being strategic about this and really being mindful about this. I'll give you, the first, the situation we had was at Minichaug Regional High School, where we had some positive cases, and the impact of that was the large amount of students that were close contacts, as well as some teachers, and the impact especially with the sports, in the sports teams. Our concern as a district was those close contacts, and the result of those close contacts might come back as being positive cases. So, therefore, we decided that we, instead of it not being the whole district going fully remote, the high school went full remote from November 9th and 10th, and then we had the Veterans Day on the 11th, 12th, and 13th. We also went fully remote at the high school. We're watching the situation. We're watching the students that were close contacts. We're getting information back, and then we're able to successfully go back to in-person learning that took place this past Monday. But that really had to do with the high school, with the amount of close contacts and monitoring those close contacts and making sure that those weren't going to then turn around and be positive and have an impact across the entire high school. Wilbraham Middle School, we did the same thing as well, too. We had a positive case as well, too. They had an impact on the staff, a larger impact on the staff. For the continuity of education, we knew at that point that we wanted to go fully remote for those first days of November 12th and November 13th. And then we actually were monitoring those teachers and making sure that everyone was going to be in a safe spot and it wasn't having infiltration into our schools. And so, we were able to, looking at the amount of, when the close contacts took place in the 14 days, we also went fully remote on November 16th. And then we were able to bring students back to in-person learning on November 17th, which was this past week as well, too. Preschool, we had a situation at Mylettree. It was isolated just into that preschool. We were notified, and this is the work that we do, is we were notified on a Sunday, and we wanted to be careful, and we wanted to make sure. We didn't know exactly the extent. We had to do our investigations with Terry, Misty, and Jill in the schools and doing the interviews. So, we closed, and that's the first time I'll use the word closed because the rest of the times, the schools were remote. We closed both AM and PM preschool on that Monday to make sure that we were able to contact those students, able to contact those parents, making sure that we had the information that we needed. I'm happy to say that we're able to open up that preschool because they weren't close contacts, and they weren't considered to be close contacts. On, out of an overabundance of caution, we designated all the preschool students in that cohort, not cohort, I'm sorry, in the AM preschool as being close contacts. Anyone who's ever been in a preschool, and I don't use this expression callously by any means, but they're like kittens in a basket, right? They're all over each other, the preschool, that AM. So, we had a hard time determining who was going to be a close contact and who wasn't. So, on the side of caution, we determined that all of those students and all those parents were contacted. We sent out the communication, and I know that some parents are saying, "I'm sending out too much communication." I appreciate that. And then there are others that are saying, "I'm not sending enough." We really try to keep everyone informed of what's taking place, not only in the individual schools, but also in the community that's. So, I'm just really showing you that we're not doing a quick knee-jerk reaction. We're not making these decisions that we're going to completely go fully remote. We want to make sure that we have some continuity of our education, like I said earlier. So, that's why we're making these decisions very decisively, and it's not made in isolation. It's made with the input from the public health, from the nurses, from myself, the principals, from teachers, and those decisions are made, and obviously, we let those out to the community. With that being said, though, you know, we have Thanksgiving coming up, and that is a big concern for us. And that, you know this, I sent out some information about making sure that you're following the guidelines that the governor and the commissioner set out about in terms of practicing safe distancing and practicing the safety measures for Thanksgiving. I, as a superintendent, I say that plea again, that please make sure that you're following those health guidelines. We'd be foolish to think that what's happening in our community is not going to have an impact on our schools. It hasn't had that huge, you know, impact yet, but we're seeing what's happening in the other communities around us, and we're seeing what's happening in our own community, Wilbraham in the yellow, but there's an uptick. Hamden in the red, there's an uptick. We're trying the best that we can to make sure that it's not impacting our students and our schools. But please know, if it ever does, know that we have systems in place to make sure that we're keeping our students and staff safe. Again, you know, the one thing about the situation, we're in a hybrid model, right? We are in this situation. The one thing that we can safely say, and for those people at home, I'll use the word, and I know a lot of you like the word, we're able to pivot if we have to, right? So, if we have to pivot to go full remote, we're ready for that. And if we have to, hopefully, our goal will be to pivot to one of these days to get back full face-to-face. We're ready for doing that as well, too. And that's why we've chosen, you know, to Damian's point earlier, it is an expensive model, and it is very a difficult model. But we know at one point or another, we're going to have to pivot to one direction or the other. But every single district in this entire state of Massachusetts, at one point or another, is going to have to pivot to have a hybrid model. You can't go from full remote back to full face-to-face without having that hybrid model taking place in between. So, I feel like we're in a better spot right now to be able to make those adjustments that we need to be making. Terry and Misty, did I miss anything, or anything else you want to add, or anything school committee wants to ask? I know this is an important topic, and I know we're pressed for time. I had 10 minutes, and I already did in two and a half.
Is there a way that we can have the data that's on the screen right here on the district website so that when parents have questions? Then, the only thing I wanted to make a comment about is, is it not at the discretion of the Department of Health at the state level that we, as long as we have the three to six-foot distance, that's why the kids can't go back full in-person? Isn't that the restriction we have right now that's kind of in place?
That's correct. Right. The guidelines go, they say anywhere between three and six feet. But the issue, Mari, is that we're wanting to make sure that, we're keeping that six-foot distance for the close contacts, right? So, all of a sudden, now, we're very fortunate that when we've had our close contacts, they've been small groups of kids. Different at the secondary level because when those students are traveling class to class, we're looking at those class lists, and we're looking at that six-foot distance. And as opposed, if it was under that, there'd be more students that would be impacted as well, too. And this information, I know, like Terry said, it just sort of hit the news yesterday. If you really appreciate, this came out October 29th, right? So, it sort of got, CDC sort of put these guidelines out again. No one really saw, you know, how the impact on it. The news came out with it yesterday. Terry wrote this up today with Misty and just sort of gotten this information. We'll have this on the website. The news came out with it yesterday, Terry wrote this up today with, with Misty and just sort of gotten this information, we'll have this on the website, this is literally the first, we, we met today and looked at this today.
I just think it'd be helpful for people when they're looking for information with regards to the district to have a place where they can go and have this information out there for them.
I do too after Cheryl.
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Al, could you answer Deisha Hoskinson's message or question directly, please?
The hard part, but I think the hard part, yeah, I just had to unmute myself for a second, I think the hard part for Deisha, she's looking for exact dates, right? And that's a really hard thing because everything's fluid right now, everything's constantly changing, we, we might have to go for remote trial. And we're, I think the part of our presentation tonight was, we're really looking at day by day and situation by situation. The one thing I can answer her is about having a full, a fully remote type of program. There is not a question in my mind as a superintendent, we're going to have a fully remote program for the remainder of this year. And I'd be very surprised if we're not going to be looking at having a full remote program for next year as well too, or some semblance of that. Because if we don't, we're going to lose our, our families to other types of options that are fully remote, so I, at this point, I, I, you know, I can. With a hundred percent confidence say that we're going to continue to have a full remote program or an option for that for the remainder of this year. And some semblance of that and, and probably into next year as well too. But to answer a question, when I'm going to go full remote or when I'm going to go hybrid, those are tough things right now.
It's in keeping with the DUCI recommendations that fully remote is always an option, it's one that we cannot close. I have a quick question.
By the way, I think Sean, someone said it earlier, and we're doing it successfully, we're doing it successfully with the remote program that we're offering.
I, I do think that i- in, in the community, it's. When I, when we talked about this at the last meeting, when I was asking you about it, it was, you know, wh- what's the line in the sand? That is going to say, okay, when we hit this, then we're going to, you know, go remote or full remote or something. And you, you spoke that there were so many factors that, that you said there wasn't a line in the sand. And then the governor goes and says, okay, you know, one week we have a certain amount and we're in the red and then the next week we have more. And we're in the clear, you know, so that, 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 that goalpost is, is moving, so I would say let's not rely on the governor, let's have our own goalpost. But I would like to say that, you know, if this, if that, if whatever, like, to, to have some guidelines. So that parents know that you're on top of it, you know, that, that, that's what I think, I, I think the, the real big question is.
I, I, I respectfully say that we're on top of this, from the presentation that Terry and I give and the work that Terry and I and Misty and our nurses are doing, we're so on top of this. But again, Sean, I'm not going to make a knee jerk reaction, say, okay, we're going to have our whole district go full remote, we're looking at situation by situation. For example, like what happened at the high school and we had to deal with that situation, it was an impact in Stony Hill, so those parents, there's a, there's a. Those parents that want their students in person, they want that ability to have that education, that way they choose that, we want to make sure that's not impacting them at that point. But if it certainly does impact Stony Hill and there's an impact there, we'll address it there, so I'm handling a situation at a time, or we are handling a situation at a time. And not doing it as a widespread decision like that.
Yeah, and, and the rumor that's going around that you're, you're pushing for, or that someone's pushing for all kids to come back fully in. Class in January, is that, is that something that's a thing or that's just a rumor that's going around?
Fully, fully in person in January?
Fully in person.
Yeah, that's, that's something we're not, we're not, we, you know, we're always looking to see, you know, we've all agreed that we're doing a really great job and we've become. A landmark for, for some of the other districts that are now looking to go hybrid and they're, they're referring to us and they're coming to visit our schools on how we're doing that. But, you know, we want to make sure that we're going to do this safely for both our students and our staff and again. Two weeks ago was a whole different conversation I was having with you than where we are right now, two weeks ago I didn't close, I didn't, sorry. Didn't go full remote any of our schools at that point, but look where we are, so it's each day. That we take the situation, we assess it the way it is and that's what we should be doing, that's what you should be asking me to be doing and so please know that, you know. We're so on top of this, it's, it's unbelievable the work that's being done to make sure that we're keeping our staff and students safe.
I mean, I appreciate.
Let me just jump in here for a second, I think it's really important to say that we believe. The younger the children, the more important it is to be in, in person, learning. That being said, can't always have that in terms of space, we can't always have that in terms of. What's happening with the metrics in the towns and what's happening right in our schools.
But Sean, that is, is, that's not our goal by January to have everybody full face to face, that's, that's something that, you know, at this point can't conceivably happen and we know that we always have to still offer. For at least this year, if not into next year, an option of being fully remote.
I just think that the people in the, in the community, I mean, remember, we're dealing with all the parents, this is their, their most prized. You know, person that the one they love the most and they, and they're, they're giving them to us to educate them. And in there is a legitimate fear, especially with the rise and increase to levels that weren't seen since April. Last year when I caught COVID, so I mean, there, there is a definite concern out there and I think. That maybe having some parameters of what actually would constitute a, a, a closing might, might make people a little more at ease. That's my recommendation to, to you, Al.
And we will never, our goal is never to close like we did last year in the spring, you know, the option we would do is be going fully remote and that's what we want to. If we have to do that, we're ready to do that at any point, but you know. We've said it over and over again, our goal is eventually for all of us, you've heard the union, you've heard teachers, you've heard principals, you've heard myself, we want to get kids back face to face, that's the number one goal, that's what we want. But please know, and, and I, I, I don't think anyone's questioning the work that, that Terry and Misty and the nurses and the principals and directors and myself included. Work we're doing, this has been our top priority, every single minute of every single day, every weekend, you know, we're sitting now, Terry and I meeting today is saying, okay. What happens if something pops up and even over Thanksgiving break, we need to make sure that our principals and everyone takes their seating charts home so that we're prepared. So if we reopen after Thanksgiving, that we know to contact those close contacts during that Thanksgiving break. So I truly need you to know that this is our top priority all the time.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, moving on.
And thank you, Terry.
Oh, Terry, yes, and Misty, you're on, thank you.
While I'm still on superintendent's board, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just one last thing, because I left it.
Just remember your time constraint.
So, so kindergarten, we, we have a kindergarten transition team, we know to point to what Cheryl said ear- earlier that, you know, we know our youngest learners, we want to get them back four, four days a week that. But we're, we're paying attention to what's taking place in our community, we developed a transition team. That we put together, it's made up of principals, myself, Tom, you know, teachers, everyone on board. That we're looking at seeing the best way that we can bring, if things are in the right spot in our community, in the right spot in our district. That we'll be able to bring back those students back face to face four days a week, we know that, that's our, something is still our priority and something to work on, I will continue to keep you updated at that as we go along. Yes, thank you, one last thing and, and I apologize that it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to try to sneak this in if I could, please. Underneath this, underneath the superintendent's report, I have a calendar that we have presented to principals and directors. And I presented to the union as well too, everyone is in favor of this, what I'm asking tonight, that if the, the school committee would take a look at this, this is for the remainder of the year. Please remember that we approved the calendar up till December, this is now from January of twenty twenty one to June twenty twenty one. What I'd really like to do is get your approval on this tonight so that if I can get this out to families tomorrow morning, that'd be great, I know people want to know what's taking place. I can walk it through you really quickly, in front of you right now, it is, it's January for the month. First is no, no school for New Year's Day and no school on the eighteenth for Martin Luther King Day. February, there's no school on the fifteenth, which is President's Day and actually there's a February vacation from the sixteenth to the nineteenth, so we'll have that in there as well too. March seventeenth, middle of the, of the month of March is Professional Learning Day and we thought that was a good point for us to put that in there for assessments, for, for conferences. April, April second, there's no school, Good Friday, and then April nineteenth to the twenty third is a combination of no school because of Patriots Day and April Vacation. May thirty first, for the month of May, May thirty first is Memorial Day and then in June would be the last day of school for students, early release would be the fifteenth. And the last Professional Learning Day for staff would be the sixteen, this is a combination of a hundred and seventy student days. What you're seeing in the bottom right of each calendar with that line underneath it is a number of student days, it totals, a total of a hundred and seventy. And yes, I am putting in February vacation and April vacation this year, I know I've played around with that for the last few years. In light of everything that's taking place, we truly believe that those are well deserved, both for our staff and for our families and our students. So again, been approved by our principals and directors and by the union, I'd love the school committee to take a vote on this so I can get this to families. Because I am late, it is November and I want to be able to get this information out to families if I could by tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I actually have a question, Al, there's no, there's no snow days in here? Now, I, I know that in theory we can all go remote on those snow days, but if, if people lose power and stuff like that, what happens?
Yep, so we never put snow days in our calendar anyway, Sean, right, so we, we, you don't have to put those in there.
No, but I thought it was a, here's, you know, has one and then the snow days were at the end, I thought they were always in.
So it's a hundred and seventy student days this year, so if we were to have a day that we had of a snow day, you add on one more day to the end of the calendar, so we'd be turning from. The sixteen to the seventeen each snow day, sometimes they have those five extra days they put into the calendar. We, we didn't put those in, in answer to your question right now, you know, snow days, we have a couple of different options, Sean, we're going to be looking at, right? One option is that we might be able to go full remote, another option is we might have to look at a delay to see if teachers are able to come in on those snow days, depending on how bad those snow days are as well too. This calendar does not have snow days built into it, it is a hundred and seventy days, student days, the last day of school would be for, for students right now, would be June the fifteenth. If we were to have a snow day, a true snow day where we weren't receiving education, we'd add one on to the.
Would that just impact the educators' day by just adding the, the following day to whatever the last day is?
Yep, you just keep adding one on and, and yes, I could have put and built in those five snow days as well too, I think we probably have done that in the past, but this is the last day.
Motion to approve the calendar.
Aye.
Aye. Yep, so they know how we're voting.
Maura.
Aye.
Shell E, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I apologize for not having it on the agenda earlier and I will get this out to the community, I'll have it on the website either tonight or tomorrow morning and get this out to families, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to start us off with a preschool update, so currently we have five preschool classrooms in the district. We have two at Green Meadows, two at Mile Tree and one at Minichog. Due to our current situation, we're not able to operate those classrooms with the typical number of peers that we normally have. So normally we operate with fifteen students in each of those classrooms, we have eight peer partners and seven special ed students in those rooms. But right now, because of, because of COVID and the fact that we have to have three adults in the classroom, we're only able to accommodate. Eleven to thirteen students in each of those sections, we have AM and PM sessions. So because of that and the number of referrals that we have, we're going to need to open up an additional half day preschool classroom in the near future. We have already posted for a teacher for this classroom. And the location is to be determined just because we're still trying to work out what we're going to do with kindergarten. If we are trying to get kindergarten students in four days a week, then we don't have space at Mile Tree or Green Meadows to accommodate this extra classroom. So we would most likely be looking at TWB as an option to house this half day preschool classroom. Does anybody have any, any questions about that, we, we're not going to have, I don't anticipate any difficulty filling the peer partner spots because we do. Currently have a waitlist of at least fifteen students on it of, of families whose students didn't get into the program just. Due to, due to COVID and due to us not having the normal amount of spaces that we have.
So now is this just for the preschool that you're talking about or the kindergarten?
No, just, just pre K.
So now could we have that at the high school, is there room at the high school?
Um, so, so that's something we would have to look at, currently, I, I believe all the classrooms are being utilized at the high school, but. We would have to explore that as a, as an additional option. Right now, we absolutely have room at TWB, it's not an ideal location because it separates them from. All the other programs, but we could accommodate them easily over there. Any questions about preschool or no? Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to move on and give you an update on testing and meetings, so our psychologists and our related service providers are doing an amazing job catching up on testing that was not able to happen in the spring. We have them utilizing TWB for testing for our remote students, we have rooms designated for testing over there that they're, that they're utilizing. The educational team leaders are doing a nice job scheduling meetings and helping to get evaluation. Reevaluations and initial eval meetings done so that we're able to. To create IEPs and continue to provide students with the services they need to be able to access the curriculum. So the other thing I wanted to check in about is the delivery of special ed services, I know there was, there were some questions about. Delivering special ed services in our current situation. So all of our special ed students, I know I mentioned this at a previous meeting, all of them have received COVID nineteen student learning plans and those plans. Were developed by the special education liaisons in collaboration with the parents to. Create a plan to describe how services are going to be delivered differently in the current environment. And all the services are designed to help students make progress toward their goals and objectives. And each parent received a, a copy of that COVID learning plan, it is a fluid plan so that if something is not working out or if. Additional support is needed, we're able to reconvene the team or just have a conversation with the parent, it's a fluid document and we could, we can update it at any time. As far as services for students in grade six through twelve, they've been delivered through live streaming since the beginning of the school year. Special ed teachers have been able to provide services to students who are in person and at home at the same time. And related service providers are providing their services either in person or remotely depending on, depending on the student. Fourth and fifth grade just recently switched to synchronous learning, which is great for special education, it facilitates more consistent. Delivery of special education services, one of our special ed teachers who was on leave. Has been doing a great job of supporting some of our students in third through fifth grade. She is delivering remote services to students in small group or individually to help support them and give them the support they need to make progress. Our elementary students who are hybrid or remote, they receive support from their special ed teachers. And their related service providers and again, our special ed teachers are doing a great job of. Providing pullout services, when it's a C grid service, they're providing pullout small group sessions for the kids. Our paraprofessionals are stepping up and doing amazing jobs, doing. Remote learning sessions with students, having small groups and individual sessions with students to help support them. Because as we know, remote learning is extremely difficult for students with disabilities. And, and I just want to take this opportunity to say that I am very grateful that our district has a conservative approach to. Remote learning and like I, I, I really feel that other districts have. Resorted to remote learning prematurely and I, I really. I'm grateful that we have been conservative, so I thank you, Al, for that, because for special education students, remote learning. Is very, very challenging and I honestly get, like when, when we talk about going remote as a district, I understand. That people are doing a great job of delivering remote services, but I get it not in my stomach when I think about special education students. Having to access learning remotely and that is the only means of them accessing it. It's, if you have a disability, if you have like a, a visual impairment or a cognitive disability or you need accommodations, those things can't happen remotely. And it's really, it, it's really stressful to think about the possibility of going remote and I know everyone will step up and do an amazing job, but. Just the thought of it is, is really, really tough, so I just needed to put that out there. That we, we need to think about our special ed students. The other positive thing is that we have been able to get all of our kindergarten special ed students in, in person four days a week, which I'm. Super happy about, I know we're working to get the regular ed kindergarteners in. In person, four days a week and that's a work in progress, I am part of that, that transition team, I'm actually facilitating that team and. We are going to try our best to get. I'm actually facilitating that team, and we are going to try our best to get kids in person as much as possible because for our early learners, accessing remotely is very difficult, and I know, I know everybody knows that. Um, as far as, I, I also wanted to comment on our counselors and our BCBAs. They are doing an exceptional job of supporting teachers. Um, they're helping kids who, in this situation, we, we're dealing with a lot of kids who are depressed, they're anxious, they're, they're having a really difficult time, and it's, um, it's, it's easy to overlook that because kids are home and they're not socializing. And the counselors are doing a really nice job of reaching out to kids, figuring out, like, if they're not showing up for remote sessions, why aren't they showing up? Are they anxious? Are they depressed? What, what's going on with them? Because we have to realize that kids can't be kids. They're not socializing like they normally would. Even when they're in school, they're struggling with engaging in normal kid activities. So, like, kudos to the BCBAs and the counselors. They're, they're doing an awesome job. So, um, that's all I got. If you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any, anything.
Gina?
Any questions?
Yeah.
I, I do. So Gina, previously, there were, um, discussions regarding the staffing level at the IRR, the elementary level. Where are we from a paraprofessional staffing standpoint?
Happy to report, we're all set, Patrick. We, we hired, we hired the final para that we needed. We really struggled with getting qualified applicants for those positions. We've had them posted for quite some time, and it's been a struggle, um, getting a, a, a really good applicant pool. And we finally hired the last person, and Mile Tree is fully staffed, I'm happy to say.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Gina? Gina, congratulate your whole staff from the school committee. Sounds like they're working extraordinarily hard.
They are. They're awesome. Thank you.
All right. Um, we're now moving on to, um, uh, Director of Curriculum. You have one minute.
And that's fine. This is more of a shameless plug for our, of sub-policy meetings more than anything. Uh, so, uh, Monday night, we will have our next Bricklum sub-meeting, uh, and at that meeting, uh, we will be, uh, preparing a series of, um, let's say presentations, but answers to several questions that we were able to go. So, uh, reason why I've asked Kate to allow me to have an opportunity today. One, uh, hoping the ninety-four families, uh, that are on today can help our, our own Nielsen ratings for our own, uh, sub-policy meetings. But, uh, some of the big topics that we will be talking about on Monday, uh, what we will be, uh, we have investigated the insurance, uh, question for our Chromebooks, uh, so that will be presented on Monday. Uh, we will be, uh, joined by Adrian Buckert from School Solutions, uh, who will be presenting to us as well. Also, uh, we have contracted with Mr. Charlie Sullivan, NCA, uh, National Champion. He will be, uh, hosting a community event for us. It will be, we will be, uh, working with our athletic coaches, our, our athletic, um, students, as well as our youth coaches in both, uh, town recreation departments. That will be on December ninth. Monday, we'll talk a little more about it. Uh, exciting today. Um, both Erin and Superintendent Ganem and I, uh, were on a conference call with our commissioner. Uh, Hampden, Wilbraham Regional School District has joined, uh, the T-Mold, T-Mobile Project. Uh, they have a project, ten, ten million hotspots requests. Uh, so we have officially submitted our names to the State of, uh, Department of Education for us to hopefully be awarded the hotspot grants. But shameless plug, but, uh, the, all of these will be presented on Monday. Uh, really excited to hear that, and Mr. Bill Powers will have a technology update on Monday night as well.
Thank you, Tom.
Certainly.
Okay, I'm probably going to need a little more than thirty seconds. Thanks, guys. Um, per se, I would like to sort of echo what, what Gina said. Um, I'm very proud to be in a district and probably one of the, the only districts that's, still has students coming to school, um, on a regular basis. Um, it speaks a lot to the staff and the people here that, that we're still doing this. Um, I would, as a money guy, um, I would love to be one of these districts that's been remote all this time to be sitting on stockpiles of PPE, stockpiles of resources and things like that, and not have to worry about paying for staff who are on leaves and things like that, um, paying for substitutes. Um, but we are where we are, and, and I'm very proud, like I said, of where we are. With that said, I have a couple of things to share with you. The first is a memo, and I won't dwell on it. Um, I'll let you read that memo. It's, uh, a couple of different reports have come out from MAS C, MAS S, and MAS Bo regarding the state budget situation. Um, the only message I'd like to say is, is, uh, kudos to, uh, the state and our leaders who have committed to, um, at least making sure that we have a relatively flat budget this year. Um, revenues for the state are, uh, are predicted to be down at least seven percent for this coming year. Um, and they have committed to fund, um, schools and local municipalities at twenty-twenty levels. Um, so it means we won't be seeing some increases, and there are a few items that will be challenging. But if you go to the second to last paragraph of my memo, I sort of summarize all of the paragraphs. And as I see it, we're looking at a total net negative variance at this point. The budget isn't done of about forty-two thousand dollars relative to where we budgeted. Um, forty-two thousand dollars on a fifty-million-dollar budget is quite honestly not that big a deal. I have, in many cases, built a budget in March, and by July, had to deal with a bigger issue, right? So you hope you're going to get some positive variance. Sometimes it's negative. This isn't tremendous. So I'm really, um, I'm really happy with what the state has done, with the commitments, um, they've made, um, to do this. So, you know, as we come into twenty-twenty-two, there may be other challenges, and we're looking forward to that. I'm working on, on the budget. Um, so I won't dwell on that. Um, if you have questions, please email me or call me. I'm happy to sit down with you and go over this. Um, there are a few items related to, um, uh, hold harmless and things like that that can be complicated. Then again, I'm happy to sort of walk through those with you if you need. Um, the other item is I've been back and forth today, and I'm sorry, I don't have anything on this here, uh, with the town of Wilbraham. Um, and I think we've spoke to the fact that there was some apprehension from them around, um, actually making good on the COVID relief funds. Um, they have been waiting for a November update that, uh, hasn't come. So, um, they, they have been hearing that there are certain things that won't be allowed for reimbursements. They have heard that there are other towns that have not been reimbursed for some of these things. Um, and that suddenly the, um, programs that were encouraging you to stockpile aren't allowing you to stockpile products. So they're hoping to have an update soon. Um, what I was hoping to do, this is all product we are going to need. If we are going to open, reopen, whatever the schools, so if you go to the memo I provided, it's about two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars of HVAC filters, uh, wipes, paper towels, masks, sanitizer, surgical gowns. Um, there are a few items that will naturally come off of this list. And I, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't need you to go dwell on that list at the moment. What I would like to do is commit to the town of Wilbraham that, depending on what happens, um, we're going to be pressed for time on this, um, that we commit to making this buy. Um, this is, we have seven months more in the year. This is probably closer to twelve months' worth of product. We will be committing to, we'll be overbuying our budget somewhat. None of this goes bad. All of this will be necessary at some point or another. Um, if I were buying this for my own home, and I thought there was a chance I might be reimbursed part or all of this, and I knew I was going to need it at some point, I would probably pull some money out of savings. So that's, when I think about the budget and I think about funding, I think about if Erin Osborne had to write the check for this, right? And what's, what's the worst-case scenario? The worst-case scenario is I'm going to have dipped into my savings on something that I would have had to spend anyhow later. Um, so I, I would like to, um, sort of request maybe a vote of support from the school committee in, in making this purchase. Uh, it would be, you know, more or less within my authority to authorize purchase orders for these purchases, and I do want to wait to hear from the town of Wilbraham and also talk to Hampden before I commit to this, per se. But I would like to be able to tell them that if may, they go out and make this buy in good faith, if they don't get reimbursement from the state or federal government, that we will reimburse the town of Wilbraham for this purchase. Uh, right now, right now, we have two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars on this list. Um, it's some, some of it, some of it at this point will not happen. Um, or we would, or we would reallocate it to other items. So my, my request to the town of Wilbraham was, here's a list of items and vendors, products that we'll need. I can't assure that every one of these products, I'm going to be able to get from that exact vendor. I may have to shop a few different vendors to get the products. Um, in the interim, some of these items, because we've waited, I had two months of rent on storage units. We're down to really only being able to put one month of rent on it because we've lost the month of November. Um, there are some laptops on here that we put on speculatively that we were buying. We've bought those. I mean, that, that's a done deal. So, yeah, I would still hope that they would allow us to go up to the two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars and just change some products out a little bit. Those aren't large. The laptops and, uh, the rental aren't huge items. So, you know, I would still hope to be in the two-hundred-thousand-dollar range.
In, um, in your, in your, yeah, in your discussion with them, and I, I got your email on that. Um, and I, have they given any reason why FEMA is being so stringent on this? Are they afraid that people are going to basically absorb the excess commodities that are out there should you reach an, another critical hit?
Right.
Um, in terms of the spread of the virus? Is that their concern? And so they're not, they're trying to sway people away from doing it, or are they just being?
I, I think they're, I, I mean, I think they're just being stingy. I mean, what they've done is they've really said the, the, the message that the town seems to be getting, and unfortunately, I'm having to pay middleman a little bit. I'm not the direct. Uh, the message the town seems to be getting is that, that they only, FEMA only wants to reimburse, um, actual incidents, right? So when an incident happens, they want to only reimburse that incident and the cost for the direct care providers. You know, we have had some incidents in the school, um, which, which have, have absolutely required our attention. The challenge is a lot of what we've done to deal with those incidents don't incur a tremendous amount of cost. We haven't brought in a private cleaning company to, um, spend tens of thousands of dollars to clean. We've added some hours to our staff, and we've used more cleaning supplies, right? So it's hard to really quantify that. I could come up with, you know, some number of hours, but it wouldn't be a significant amount of money. Um, you know, this would be, you know, if we could do this, this would be significant, and it would save us all that down the road in bits and pieces, plus the PPE hand sanitizer and things like that.
Either way.
Right.
But, but we talked about this during our last finance meeting, that there's a document out there on the government, the Mas Gov website about what is acceptable and what's not. Has somebody actually looked at that to see if it is and it isn't? And the two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars that you're talking to the town of Wilbraham about, I believe the town of Hampden also said that they would reimburse. So even if that two-hundred-and-twelve can't be totally reimbursed to Wilbraham, Hampden may be able to help pick up some of that difference. I mean, I don't know, necessarily know that if you would have added, if it was say like three-hundred thousand, I mean, there is, I feel like we would want to use all of the funds, but at this point, I mean, I would hope that you're having the discussions with both towns and not just the ones.
I think what, I think what Erin's getting to is the fact that if FEMA comes back and says, we're not paying any of it, um, you know, all of a sudden, that's a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar hit to both towns. So it's better to ask for permission than forgiveness. At least tell them, you know, look, we need to do this. If it doesn't work out and you don't get reimbursed, we're going to have to take it out of the school budget, but.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I mean, if they're going to put a document out there that says, these are the guidelines of what you can use and what you can't use,
Right.
then it defeats the purpose of putting a guideline and then say, I mean, I realize we're talking about the state, but I'm just saying.
The state government.
The, the Hampden Select Board has formally voted to obligate, uh, twenty-five percent of what Williams, uh, Wilbraham does. I, I almost said it. I got, I'm getting there. Um, so that's in line with the share, the assessment shares, which I think is appropriate. Um, you know, given, uh, Wilbraham's trepidation, I, I will be reaching back out to the town of Hampden to touch base. I've really just mostly been dealing with Wilbraham in the past day or two. Um, but I will reach back out to Hampden.
I only say it because being one of the members of Hampden, I hear a lot of Wilbraham conversations, but we also exist, too. So I just want to make sure that you don't forget about them.
Nope.
Because they're willing to help out.
Yeah. So I will, I will reach out tomorrow to them and follow up.
Erin, what, would you like the word into the other motion?
I just, what I did is I, I, I said, "so moved" after he said.
Right, but I, I want to hear what the, the words are that we're moving.
I, I would like the school committee to commit, um, sorry, give me a moment.
Hey, did you get it before when he said?
Supporting the acquisition of the product, equivalent product in my memo dated October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. Should, should, should the town of Wilbraham not be able to receive reimbursement?
Thank you. We have a motion moved.
So moved, second.
Second. Do we have a second?
Cheryl, I've got a question on that. So last meeting, you mentioned that you felt having that funding would make it more profitable than not, that we could finish the year with the current expenses that we have outstanding. So if we now have to pay that out of the school budget, does that, are we still able to finish the year without having to dip into E and D? Or have to make staffing changes as a result of the, the budgetary?
No, I, I, I mean, I, I feel like, like this is something where we would have to, if we have to reimburse this ourselves, we're going to have to dip into some reserves, whether it's E and D or school choice or something like that. Um, you know, I, I feel good about our ability to do that. Um, we did, based on, you know, a lot of things that occurred last year, we were able to put a solid amount of money into E and D. Um, I have some trepidation about next year's budget, the twenty-twenty-two budget, um, around where the state may be with revenues and their ability to, to support. I very much hope they'll continue to support education and to continue to support, uh, local municipalities the way they did this year. Um, but it's going to be another year of, of negative revenues, reduced revenues for the state. Um, so there, there, there is some fear in my mind around that, but, um, I don't think this is, again, this is money we would have to spend, so we might have to pull it out of reserves, but it would be less money we would have to take out of reserves later.
The other thing that's, and this is a, so this is a rolling process in the budget, right? So we don't know what's exactly going to take place in January, February, and March. If, you know, if Congress is able to put together a funding package, they, that may provide relief for us as well. But if you're saying that this is product that we need to get us through the end of the year, then I would say, order it because I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to get stuck in a situation where we can't bring kids to school because we don't have the, the proper equipment that we need. Um, that being said, the other thing we need to think of is if we hold off on this and we wait for congressional approval of some sort of stimulus package, you may see the price of this stuff go up dramatically, in which case, because I know we got hit with that, um, in, you know, in, in April and May, when, you know, people were out basically selling N-ninety-five masks, you know, a, a typical item that goes for seventy cents, we're selling for five dollars a piece. So if we can get them and get them at a market price now, I think that's probably the best thing we can do, at least to provide us with assurances. We can work this into our budget number when we go to the towns and talk during our budget sub-meetings as we begin to formulate the budget, and that's just going to be part of our overall operational number.
And also, just to bring up the point, they're not going to say no to everything. It's not a, you can get everything or not. It's, they might pick off a couple of things here and there, so it's not, we're not going to get hit with two to three-hundred thousand dollars back. If anything, it'll be a percentage of that.
Right. I mean, I want to understand. There's a worst-case scenario that they may deny everything, but I suspect that there's.
No, there's, there's a list. We can fight that. I mean.
Approved minimally.
And there's nothing on this list that, that we're even really, it's not, it's evident that we've, that we've looked at that list, Mark, you know, and what should be, what been approved. There's nothing that is extraordinary on this list. Um, but there is a little bit of apprehension, and, and I agree because, but I think to Erin's point, it's like, we need, we're going to need this. We're being in this, the model that we're in and having students and teachers in, and we're keeping them safe. We're going to need these supplies. It's going to cost us, so we know we're going to have to pay for them now or pay for them later. And if we get that support from both Hampden and Wilbraham, right, that financial part, that will only help us out. right, that financial part, that will only help us out. I think that's what you're trying to say and trying to get that all approved for.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table.
Are we ready to vote?
Any other discussion?
Hey, any others discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Maura.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Aye.
Patrick. Aye. So we're unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
And with that, I will conclude.
Okay.
Cheryl, if I could jump in here for a second, um, and I think this might go to you and this might be Tom Mazza as well, or I don't know. I guess there's a policy that's going out for the use of the computers. And, um, I was talking with some families that they have kids who might be in kindergarten and then might be in second or third grade or something like that. And one of them has a computer, the other one doesn't. And, and it seems like it's an all or nothing sign on that. Uh, have you been tracking any of this?
I think this is, uh, down on number eight.
Oh, okay.
I believe, under unfinished business. Is that right, Tom? The acceptable use or responsible use?
We'll get there.
Okay, we'll get there.
No, that's, that's a policy. We're not a curriculum.
New business?
Cheryl, just before we move on, I just had a quick, a quick question for Aaron and I wanted to open it up to the full committee because um, I'm looking at dates right now to do our budget roundtable. And, um, right now, the Ham, the Wilbraham Town Meeting is scheduled for June 15th. And which would bring us back to a May 1st cutoff, which is, which is, you know, typically where we are as far as timing and, uh, substance of that. I just wanted to get some feedback from, from you guys as far as how you see that happening, so that when I talk to the boards of selectmen, advisory and finance, I can come to them with an idea. This is essentially a roundtable meeting to discuss the budget. I think, you know, there's, there's arguments to have it earlier, like in February, and there might be arguments to have it later, like in May. And I kind of want to hear your guys' take on it. I don't really have a, a dog in the fight either way, but it's something that I, I want to make sure that we at least have a discussion about before I go to them and start working out a date. The way I see the, the, the roundtable meeting going is kind of like what we did at the police station last year, where we provided a couple of different budget scenarios. Because I know that finance in, in Wilbraham is always very hot about, you know, well, what happens if we don't give you this? And so we were able to provide a very detailed analysis of, look, if we come in at 3%, this is what we have. If we come in at 2.5%, this is what we cut. We come in at 2.25, this is what we cut. Having the meeting in February, I think, might be a little bit of a detriment to that, only because our budget numbers won't be as complete as they would be, say, in, in late April or early May. The flip side of it is I don't want the boards of selectmen to feel like we're being, you know, put up against the wall to say, okay, you know, final hour, got to make a decision. So just, I would open it up to you guys. You guys have any strong preference either way?
Is that, I, I mean, in the interest of time, is it something that we can table here and talk about during the budget subcommittee and then bring it back to the next school committee?
We can.
Because then we'll have the other members from each community in that meeting to kind of see what gauge, not just the school committee, but some of the other players.
Yeah, well, no, that's why I was going to, I was going to take the opportunity just for two minutes to just see if you guys had any ideas or preconceptions about it, so that when we do get to budget sub, you know, we can already know what we were talking about. So if, if you don't have any ideas, it's okay. I'm sorry, just.
I necessarily know that it's certainly ideas. It's just I'm kind of on the spot to be able to put my frame of reference there. Cause I know that I'm on the, um, the capital planning committee in Hamden, and I know that we're trying to get a meeting put together so we can start to look at some of that stuff. And so I'll be reaching out to Aaron for some of the discussions from the school side of things, not just the town side of things as well. So that's kind of what I'm trying to stay. In tonight's meeting, not trying to get ahead.
Does it potentially make sense to do two? We have to dip into E and D because I think the 22 budget's going to be pretty darn ugly. And we're going to need E and D to maintain as close to a level service budget that we can. And so it may be helpful to share what it would look like in that initially, and then as we get closer to seeing what it actually could be based off where money. I would just think the earlier we can advocate, the better. Have to be two different meetings in order to do that.
What do you guys think?
I just know those budget roundtables are usually in, in March. And I, and I know it's, they're always fraught with tension because we don't have the numbers from the state. And so I, I don't know. Putting it off to like the beginning of April, but I, I always thought it had to do with the, the elections, that it had to be X number of days.
Which, it's 45 days before that's, so our vote on the budget needs to be done by May 1st. So that being said, we have, you know, you could do April, you could do, uh, March.
You're talking roundtable, not the public here. There's the public, public presentation budget and there's the roundtable.
Okay. They're usually within a couple of weeks, aren't they? Usually you do the roundtable beginning of March and then we have the final, the end of March.
So I think the purpose of the budget roundtable is just get everyone together, start talking about it, right? Cause we're all in this, both Hamden, Wilbraham School Committee, to bring that one together. So the sooner that, at least the know we're wrapped, I mean, we're already in the middle of November. So to put something on the books right now would be a smart thing to do.
We did end of February, does that, and then we can kind of play around from there. And then if you get to the end of February, if you get to the roundtable, there's a lot of contentious stuff, maybe we could go back and do it. Is that all right with you guys?
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Are we going to put another budget subcommittee meeting on the calendar?
I think we did, didn't we? The first week in December. We should have.
Which day?
We talked about it the last meeting. It was going to be, we wanted to get through budget and then get, um, just past, uh, Thanksgiving. So it was going to be the first Monday. Let's say it was the fourth.
Do you want to shoot for the?
Seventh is the first Monday.
Is that Monday, the 30th?
We could do Monday, the 30th, or we could do the seventh. Well, we can post it anytime. I guess I'm just, Aaron, what's your, what's your?
Let's do the seventh.
Seventh, okay. Oh.
Oh, good.
We'll be sure to, we'll be sure to have cake and ice cream.
Harry Bird's birthday. Okay.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Sounds good.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I know that I presented my goals to you two weeks ago and you're, we referred to them as that first read. And you also got some feedback on that night as well, too. Um, I also reached out, each one of you individually gets some feedback as well to, to. I did take the feedback along with setting some benchmarks and added it to my goals. I still believe these goals are, are goals that are, are goals that are solid and good for both myself and for the district. Um, and I know one of the comments came up about the evaluation pieces. So please know the evaluation piece is just not set on my goals, but also set on all the benchmarks I go along with that as well. So, um, I believe you have Ronnie in front of them or you have another set of the goals that I added a couple of things and comments you guys gave, goal two. I know we're pressed for time, but, um, I've got more as well, too. My first goal is my professional, my professional growth goal. This is a piece that's highlighted in that, in the doctor's hole, Chris, um, where I'm going to try to have that timing in there. So it's the tenement of my father reports of college innovation and being utilized positively impact professional growth of the administrative team. Getting rid of like that first goal was about being part of my professional role with Lower Pioneer, Valley, Connecticut, Valley, North Bay. And the Hamden Wilbur in partnership with Youth Coalition, which is signing, um, I'm basically thinking about tenants that we don't want to be present on. Um, my second goal was student learning goal, which is school visits and walkthroughs. That, that still is an important goal. I added part that, you know, I know Maura spoke of. Continue to, to calibrate observations and principles and teacher feedback that impacts student achievement. But we're going to be looking at the BASS foundations, MCAS. Right now, we had a conference call with the commissioners. They are still doing access in MCAS, but that's for another lengthier conversation. Advanced placement and individual teacher and student assessments. My goal three, um, district improvement is that cultural proficiency. That's a huge goal that we're doing not only as, as myself, as the superintendent, but our principals, directors and our teachers. This is a, a really important goal for us. And this is, you know, the work of unveiling and celebrating the cultural proficiency in our district. We got a, a lot of work to do and it certainly won't be a goal that I accomplish in one year, but a goal that will be ongoing hopefully in our district. Goal four is that fiscal responsibility made some changes that were asked as well, too, about supporting and managing the fiscal 21 budget. And, and, and getting ready and prepare for presenting a fiscal 22 budget that is approved by both school committee and passed by both towns of Hamden and Wilbraham. Goal five, I, district improvement, effective communication. I, I constantly trying. Again, I'm being respectful to everyone, you know, it's, I'm trying to serve a lot of, a lot of people and making sure my communication is out there. You know, sometimes it's too much, sometimes it's too little. You know, at the beginning of the year, I always had too, too few communications. Now I'm giving too many. So I'm really trying to find that happy balance in there. Every communication they send out, I'm making sure that now I'm dating them and putting them on the district website as well, too. So those are my goals I respectfully present to you, but I don't believe they're goals that, um, are ever, should be permanent, that we should be constantly looking at. The last goal that I did put in there, and it's a goal that I think my, my job as superintendent is do the very best I can each and every day. We, we have incredible teaching staff. We have incredible directors and principals that work in our district. Again, we are now a, a landmark for what's happening in with education that we're providing right now. And my job, you know, and I think one of you said that to me is, you know, being the very best superintendent I can and supporting our teachers and principals and directors and the great work that they're doing as well, too. That's my number one goal, I believe, right now during this COVID that we're dealing with. So those are my goals I respectfully present to you.
Second.
Second, third.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Appreciate the support. The next thing I'm going to go really quickly is the appointment of our attendance officer. We have, you have that in front of you right now. It's, we have retired Wilburham Police and Deros, Dennis LaPlante. He successfully served that district as the attendance officer for the last, last years and does a thorough professional job. Incredible work he does. Now more than ever, we're checking on attendance. Now more than ever, we're checking about making sure that students are really residents of our community, are part of our Hamden, Wilburham Regional District. I respectfully submit to you the appointment of this, that we can have him do that role for another year.
I make a motion to accept the nomination of, uh, Dennis LaPlante to be the.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Thanks, because he's already been working for us. Thank you.
Patrick, Cheryl, aye.
Dennis does an incredible job. We're very fortunate to have him.
Yes, we're very fortunate to have him. Policy review, first reading.
Okay, so very quickly, we have a meeting, um, to discuss the, and update the new policy. So what you have is a first reading. It's language primarily, and it's from MASC. So I would encourage you to take a look. And if you have any questions or concerns for the second reading next time, we'll, uh, we'll discuss that.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes.
Last night, the lower pioneer, um, collaborative, about collaborative net and two things. We have a clean audit. Second thing is they brought up the subject of getting reimbursed for PPE equipment. Apparently the collaborative is not eligible for the CARES Act money. And so they said the school districts are getting $225 per student that is reimbursed for PPE. And could they get half of that for the career tech students, which was 26 students? Could they get half of that money, $112, to use to get reimbursed for the PPE that they're providing for those kids for the half days that they're at the collaborative? I said I would bring it back to my board committee and we can discuss it. 26 students from Hamden, Wilburham that attend career tech. So it's a total of $2,925. It is what they would be looking to get reimbursed.
Can you say that dollar amount one more time?
$2,925.
And Michelle, can I just ask a question? Sorry, because we got a meeting with the NED and bringing it up. So they're asking all the communities to give.
Yes, all partners, yes, to get reimbursed.
Just explain, so who's getting $225? And where is it coming from?
So the districts are getting reimbursed for PPE. That's what.
Yeah, we, we.
Oh, okay.
We, we've spent that.
Except, I was just going to say, except if you're going through FEMA, in which case, in which case you're not going to reimburse.
There's another point you need to bring, you need to bring up though, too.
So there are, so there are three grants that I previously shared with you and we've actively said. One was this $225 per student. That was, that ended up being $655,000 for the district. So it's a significant sum of money. You know, $2,500 or $2,900, you know, isn't really that much for a very small amount of students to help support their needs. I don't think is, is outrageous in, in my mind. You know, the reality is, I mean, that money is, you've spent it. I mean, we take out a portion of money, but again, I don't consider $3,000 a tremendous amount to kind of support our kids.
So do we have to make a motion to approve?
Well, we, we, as a, a group of collaborative last night, we did not vote on it. Because I, I said, I, I said, no, I need to bring this back and I'll, I'll let you know what the feeling is of with Eddie. And then I would be willing to vote on it.
So now did they say they were asking any of the other?
Every district, all, all funding districts, yes.
I'd be interested to see what they say when they come back with, if what everybody else said.
Some districts have, we have only 26 students. There are some districts that have like 80 kids. I mean, it, we're, we don't have a ton compared to, do you think the largest one, maybe they went there and said $10,000?
I, I gotta say that, um, I, 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 I think we gave them a ton of money. And they gave us a, a, not a lot of money back, considering that we didn't use their services since March. I, I, I don't think they spend wisely over there and I would vote against it.
What's the? The, the bigger question is, I mean, the, the CARES Act was a, was a pretty wide open net. I mean, it wasn't many people that didn't benefit from the CARES Act. Did they, did they even, did they even apply? I guess that's the.
I don't think they're eligible.
They may not have been eligible.
They're not, that's what I got told by Hannah. They were not eligible and for that money.
So strange.
That's a question, Bill. Yeah.
I don't think it's a lot of money. I probably would bring that back to them and just ask them, say, you know, what was the, you know, what was the basis by which you weren't eligible for reimbursement for PPE, especially because they're directly involved with, you know, with student services. I don't have a problem with the $2,900. I'd say, you know, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about, you know, what went on in terms of grant application, if, if there was one in grant research. I just, it would seem, it would seem unlikely to me that they would have been, that they would have been omitted from the processing is how they're directly involved with the education of students, but I, I.
But I wonder if because they're part of, they're, they're a sub offset of the regional districts or the other schools that they, they would be able to apply to the school of which the children were. And so that's why they're actually asking her to come back to us to say, can we reimburse them?
And, and I think respectfully, Michelle, she's sort of like the messenger now. So they haven't even vetted this to our, our business manager or superintendent. I think it's really interesting. I met with them all day yesterday morning and that conversation didn't come up with Aaron. So I, I just, for Michelle's sake, like when we, they officially let us know a superintendent called the business manager, they want that money? But I think Michelle's just sort of give us an update, which is.
It's seven o'clock. Okay, so.
No, Kate's, Kate's down in the district.
We can't start the session now.
Motion to adjourn?
We've got to do executive session, Cheryl. We can do an executive session without, um, being on Zoom because it's all amongst us. And I can just go quick. All the resolutions were, uh, passed except for the last one, which was tabled.
Thanks, Michelle, on that. Thanks, Sean, on that. Appreciate it.
Make it long to do an executive session.
Second.
Aye.
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 Hi, just a reminder, we're not returning or only returning to adjourn. Why we're leaving early, right?
And we are leaving early.
We are only returning to adjourn and we are leaving early so that we, um, we can partake the catch my breath anti-vaping seminar webinar that is being run by the coalition and starts imminently. the Catch My Breath anti-vaping seminar webinar that is being run by the coalition and starts imminently.
And we're all being part of that, that's why our meetings end a little bit early.
And we're all part of that.